Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, will you please take roll call?
Dave Abdella?
Here.
Bill Bazey?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Tom Wenzel?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we begin our meeting tonight, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the 911 victims and also for the late Councilman Joseph Kaczynski. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask my counsel, pro temp, and retired Marine, Bill Bazey, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, first item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Order of Business September 11th, 2018, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdella. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next, we have the Approval of Minutes. Minutes from the regular meeting of August 28, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I move that we approve the Minutes from August 28, 2018, the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as submitted in Item 4A.
Second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes here have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items only. Please step to the microphone, state your name, address, and limited to two minutes. And again, it must be something that is currently on today's agenda.
Good evening, everyone. Sohar Abdalhaq, 354 Rosemary. Actually, there is more than one subject I want to talk about, but I'm going to talk about one because of the time. About the 30 years which we want to extend, I mean, the 30 percent we want to extend to employees in order to return to work five days, they gave up 10 percent. And this was negotiated at that time in 2011, and it was the most miserable negotiation I see, and the most miserable contract for the favor in the favor of the city. Now, we have to give 30 percent to the employees to come back to work? That is the biggest joke. Then, we have to give people some kind of five-year seniority? Seniority is earned by working, not by buying it at 11 percent, 12, 13, and 14 percent. Now, is there actuary report to show what is the effect of this kind of business on the city, on the resident, how much it's going to cost us if people just retire in the next three, four years and live 25 or 30 years? How much money it's going to cost us? Nobody calculated that. I urge the city council, before you vote on anything on this agenda, to study it to make sure it's not going to hurt us residents who paid over $15 million to keep this city open and to keep the employees working through the headly override. I want you to be very careful, please, on everything here.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hello, Madam Chair. I guess this is related to the same issues, the extension of the non-union agreements and the rough draft of the retiree ordinance, and that is that the, I would like to see, as I stated in the past, that the actuarial impact study be put on the agenda so it's received, noted, and filed, so that there is a document that you guys are aware of the cost of the, because the state law requires that you be aware of it. So, there is a study that's been done, and I know, but there is no noting that if you guys have received it or not received it, and if you're aware of the cost and how it impacts us. But if this was on the agenda, you received, noted, and filed, then there would be a documentation of that, of you receiving it. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve fund transfers and current claims, 6-1 through 6-26, as outlined.
Second.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Again, I still, my stand's firm on going back for RFPs, and a lot of companies are in here. I still stand behind it. There's a few companies that we just keep awarding contracts to without RFPs. The one, there's a lot of grievances here. We got claims from attorneys, a lot of hours being charged for grievances. There's six that I counted on 6-6. We don't know what these grievances are, and we're still awarding contractor, contracts to outside outsourcing, and I don't know if these grievances are tied to it. So, we need to have a discussion on that. I'm sure they're not, it's not going to be discussed at this meeting, but that's very concerning to me that they have six grievances that we've never seen before on 6-6. At the last meeting, it was stated that DPW, they're concentrating on just cutting trees. We got a claim here on 6-8 for tree service for $8,600. Also, on 6-17, Mr. Miyaki's fees, there was one for the meeting on the 14th. Mr. Miyaki, you, I don't know if you adjusted the time when you spoke as a resident. It was charged 4.2 hours here, but I believe you, at two separate occasions, you were in line speaking as a resident, not as an attorney, so you charged us for 4.2 hours at that meeting. So, we need, I need an explanation on that one. And also, we have the same issue with sewer cleaning. You got a vehicle parked at DPW, which sounds pretty, I mean, it's not acceptable to me. I don't want to use our own terminology. I don't know, for liability issues, I don't know why we have a company that is cleaning our sewer parked at DPW. That's all I have on claims.
Yeah, I also too worry about the vehicle parked at the DPW that is not city property. It is in violation of our charter to have a private vehicle parked on our city property. Also, I worry about liability because of the fact it's inside a building. If that building burns down, whose insurance covers the vehicle? There's just too many, too much liability involved in that, but that's my concern too.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Can we go back and take those one by one? Because I also had questions about 6-2 and 6-8, which would be to Mr. Blackburn. I believe you're representing Director Zimmer this evening, and I had the same questions, not, I'm sorry, Councilman Bazey, but I'd like to follow up on those individually to see if we can have some resolution, because, you know, one with, you know, again, it's not about the company, it's about the service that DPW, our crews are contracted, you know, by their contract to do. And so, we had the lawn cutting with the public property and public easement in 6-2. We were told that, you know, the tree service, that's what we're focusing on, right? In 6-8, but I guess my question is, with this type of service, is that something we don't do? Because this was like the grinding and the stump removal. And I want just some clarification for that, please?
The grinding of the stumps, we do not do. We have always contracted that out. We don't have a stump grinder. There are some trees that are, that were really big that we used the contractor for to take down. The past week or so, we've had some storm damage, so they've been concentrating on picking up the storm damage. They've been trying to trim trees in the trash areas. So, some of the bigger removals were left to the tree contractor to take down in order to free up our tree crew to do the other things.
Okay. I had one more question, but I want to make sure Councilman Bazey's were answered, because you had several that you listed. Were they all, were there any other addressing that, or may I move on, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay. Back to 6-2. Because we bid out this service, and I know this company had bid on the residential service, do we know if that included, or did we go out for bids for the public property, public easement services for cutting, like, you know, the grass along the creek and such?
The city property grass?
This, what's in the claim is the public property right of ways. So, my question is, is did we go out for bids for that, or was that just awarded to this company? Because they did, they residential, yes, there was a bid and they were accepted, but that was for residential, not the public property. So, I'm asking if there was a bid process included here?
Not for that, because we used the contractor that had won the bid the first time, because it was, the bid was awarded to them, so we just used them because they are already an awarded contractor for the city.
Right, but their contract is no longer valid, what I understand, because I looked it up, and I think it expired in 2016, so are we going out for a new bids on that?
I will have to check into that. I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think you asked that same question at the last meeting, and I did answer it. There wasn't a one-year extension which took us through this year. You've definitely made it very clear that you want us to go out for bid, and I promise you that we'll be going out for bid in the spring for a contractor. To go at this point would put us really behind.
No, was that, did that come to council to get approved for the year extension?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
The other thing I might add is, we're looking at some alternatives if we run into this problem, and we will not, I would expect that we would not go through this process like we did this year. We have some thoughts of an alternative process that would be in compliance with everybody's wishes, so, but it wasn't enough time to set that up.
Right.
It would be enough time for next year.
And I understand the one-year extension on the ordinance issue, but it was never a contract for it to cut city-owned property. There was never one I found. So, we're talking, it's fine for ordinance, but not for city, because they have no contracts to cut it.
Well, again, if I can just answer, if we need to go out to bid on that in the future, I think that's a great idea, but at this point, it will definitely put us behind to try to go through that process at this point.
Okay.
The grass, the grass season should be over probably mid to late October at the very latest. Sometimes, we have to cut maybe the first week in November if we get a lot of rain in October, but I think it's a great suggestion. I just think at this point, it would really delay things for us.
Well, I guess my issue too was, like I had stated before, in the past, we only had six men that were assigned to the highway department to cut the grass, and they were able to do so. Now, we have 11. We have the manpower to do it, and we didn't get a lot of extra grass in the city. If anything, we've probably got less.
Well, you mean growth of grass?
I'm talking about green areas that were owned by the city that needed grass cutting.
We have a lot more property than we've ever had. We purchased a lot of properties that, you know, for first right of refusal. We have, there's a lot of properties to maintain that we didn't have even three.
But that's the, that would be like an ordinance cut up.
No, no, those are separate. When they're purchased by the city, our ordinance department wouldn't issue a violation to the city. It would just be cut on a regular schedule. Once we own it, then we take over maintaining the property. In fact, there's a gentleman here in the front row that's probably going to talk about Greenlee Park, a house that we purchased. I'm hoping he's here to talk about that and nothing else. And just today, I had to meet with a contractor, just today, I had to meet with a contractor regarding that, because along with purchasing that house, and Mr. Miyaki can speak to this, we had to also execute an eviction on that property. There was a lot of things left there that have to be cleared out and hauled away. That's going to cost us to do that.
Okay, and also too, if, do you have a list of the city-owned properties that we recently purchased? If you could get them to me, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, just for this year or the last couple of years?
Last couple of years that we've added on.
I'll get that to you.
Because I know we've added more guys anyway, so, you know, we should be able to handle it.
I'll definitely get that to you.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
This is, I'm not going to harp on this too much, so, same thing about the boom truck. We purchased a new one, correct?
Yes.
We're spending a lot of money on this one now.
Yes, there's no definitive date yet. It's being built. We're just waiting for it to, for them to call and say it's ready.
Because, you know, this is being, this is almost every other week, we're getting bills for repair, and I would have to think about calling the repair facility and say, why aren't these things caught when they do, when they have it for repair? I mean, some of these things here to me should have been caught the last time they had the vehicle to repair them. I mean, these things just don't go bad overnight. I can guarantee you, they don't go bad overnight, because if that was in there two, three, four weeks ago, they should have saw this stuff that's going bad. These things are, you know, part of the platform should have been checked and inspected for just, for safety sake itself. So, but I just, you know, need to, we need to get that new one here. Maybe we can call the company up who's making it and kind of put a rush on it. And the other issue I have is, again, the sewer cleaning. I don't know when that contract is up, and if the contract has been up, we need to find, go off a bid on that one. And if there's a way I can come into Mr. Clerk's office and find that contract and look at it to see what it looks like, I'd appreciate if I could get a copy of it. I'll try to get in early rest of this week to get it. So, because I'm concerned about all the money we're paying for sewer cleaning, and it's like a snapshot every two weeks of the same ones over and over and over again, and very upsetting to see $23,300 going on the same ones every week. That's all I have, Council Chair.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
Well, something's been on my mind for the last couple of weeks. We've been talking about the tree trimming and the grass cutting, and we've been told by the representative, the director of DPW, that it's a problem with people refusing overtime. I think this is ludicrous. These jobs here at the DPW are good-paying jobs with great benefits, and if someone refuses overtime, we should have, we should have an answer to this problem. If you refuse overtime, then you go down to the bottom of the list, and everyone else is offered overtime, no matter what your seniority is. If you're top seniority, you get offered first. If you refuse it, you go down to the bottom of this, and you don't get to pick tree trimming or grass cutting. I know it's only a few individuals, and it's a shame that someone who is working for the city of Dearborn Heights thinks that the city of Dearborn Heights is working for them, and they should take this time to look at themselves and say, you know, I've got a great job, great benefits, and you don't have to work that long to get a pension, and say, I've worked 42 years as a reunion plaster. I get $25,000 a year pension with no healthcare benefits. But I negotiate these contracts because they are negotiated with the union, and I honor them. But for someone to come in here and refuse overtime because they don't like that particular job, but I'll do another job, that's unacceptable. And I want the chair to get together with the director, come up with a plan for next year, or maybe even sooner, but we need, we need to solve this problem right away, because I've contacted by so many residents, and it'd say, oh, I don't want to trim trees today, I'm only going to cut grass. You know, that's ridiculous, and that's my feelings on that.
Okay, well, you know what? I have not seen any evidence that they've been offered or asked overtime. I mean, do they have a list of who refused it?
Well, we've been told that they're refusing it.
I'd like to see that, because maybe we can work on that with the individuals.
Yeah, we have lists, and...
We have a list. For my department, I keep a daily list of everybody who is asked and whether they have said yes or no, and whether they had the day off, whether it was vacation day or something where they're, well, not eligible for overtime, but yes, we do have it.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to meet with you and see what that list has on it, and maybe we can figure out a solution.
Madam Chair.
The city's suffering over this issue. We have to take care of it.
Absolutely.
I mean, since we're on this discussion, are any of the grievances that we have on here, the six, are they from DPW? I just want to be on, I want everybody to go on record here. I mean, are any of them, any of the grievances that we have here, somebody's actually putting a grievance because somebody else is doing the work? It's not that hard. I mean, it's either yes or no.
He would rather answer that.
Well, who would know? I mean, their grievance, who's it filed with?
Well, usually grievances are between the union and management, which is the administration's role. Your jobs as the council is a legislative role. That is not a legislative decision. That is administrative decision. That's handled between the union and the administration, which the union and the mayor's office is handling that situation.
That's understandable, but we've got billing for it, and we do, we do handle the money part of it, and we want to answer if this is what the money is going for, because we have to approve it.
Council Chair.
We're not asking for details.
Unfortunately, I have to concur with Mr. Blackburn on that. You get into a union position, and myself being in a union as long as I've been in a union, union grievances, even, even a union committee man or representative can't speak to the public or even to other workers about a grievance being written or what it's written for. That, that's totally, it's like, it's like going to a confessional and talking to a priest, and the priest's going on telling everybody what you're confessing. It's taboo. So, to speak of what the grievance is about, as much as I dislike it that way, it's the way it is, and unfortunate, you know, even a union guy can't tell other union people what a grievance is about.
Right, it depends, to a certain level, you can discuss it, but not into the intimate details of exactly what person it involves.
It's hard to say, was it written for this or that or this?
You can, you can discuss it in a general...
Madam Chair.
I don't know the actual law on it, but I know it's always been taboo. When I was a representative, you didn't discuss it.
Well, see, yeah, when I was a representative, we could in general, but not get into details of names and the actual people that it involved.
And that is correct. So, you could, I believe that Elizabeth, Mrs. Perry, our HR director could tell us either yes or no, but no details. You don't name names, you don't give any details.
No, yeah, we don't want names.
But you could say yes or no, correct?
Right. To that question. Yeah, Mr. Blackburn, one of, yeah, one of the grievances is yes.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, at this point, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids. We have Fire Chief Brogan acceptance of new rescue squad bid.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant?
I move, we concur with Fire Chief Dave Brogan for the purchase of the new rescue ambulance squad as outlined in 7A and return the unsuccessful bid bonds.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Parks and Recreation Director Gribble, authorization to bid Swapka Park Tennis Courts Replacement Project.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
I move that we concur with Parks and Recreation Director Congribble authorizing the bid for Swapka Park Tennis Courts Replacement Project. Wade Trim and Associates have completed the bid documents for the above referenced project, and they need approval for the four tennis courts located at Swapka Park as outlined in Item 7B.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Where's, where's it going to be advertised for RFP? Somebody tell us that, because last time we brought this up, somebody mentioned Facebook or...
Council, I, Mr. Director Gribble?
Yeah, we just follow the city's normal policy that it would be controlled by.
Thank you. Now...
The Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
Director Gribble, can you give us a brief description of how these remodeling of these tennis courts will benefit the community?
Well, tennis is still a very popular sport, and in fact, one time, Annapolis High School tennis team issued tennis courts there that are really not available in that area, so hopefully they will benefit, it will be available to anybody in the community. We don't have any tennis courts in that area, so the board really is under the national recommended number for a more population of that size, but it's still, it provides a good service.
Does a high school, you referring to Annapolis High School? Are you referring to Annapolis High School? Do they plan on using the courts?
I believe so. I haven't had any direct discussions, but when they were operational in the past, they have used them, so I imagine they will be contacting us.
The superintendents in the audience, we would make those available if you have a team.
Be happy to have them available to us.
For yours.
Councilman Constant?
To Councilman, further answer Councilman Wenzel's response, this has been a big issue because the vegetation overgrown, it destroyed the tennis court base, but, you know, a lot of people, the seniors use those, I've used them, and they're right behind Richard A. Young, right next to the rain guards. So, we're getting money through the Wayne County and Commissioner Diane Webb, correct, to, so, you know, this is very welcome.
Would they be accessible or available to the people using the Richard A. Young Center for different, I know it was mentioned before that, what's that game that they like to play now?
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Pickleball, we're looking to expand at some point into pickleball. It's going to get popular, but they do play indoors at the Grace Center. There's three courts that we have, rent friendly available to them to play indoors. We just don't have any tennis courts in there, so it really is a need for some tennis courts.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from the mayor, planning commission appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council concur with Mayor Dan Pulekow in appointing Mr. Tom Wolagorski of 26733 Ridge Roof Drive for the Planning Commission as outlined in 8A.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
We know Mr. Wolagorski is out with a little kid. He's got his house for catechism, so congratulations and thank you, Mr. Wolagorski.
Yeah, he's been in Dearborn Heights a long time and owns an independent business.
Yep, small businessman in Dearborn Heights.
I've used him on a regular basis for roofing. Pretty good guy.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have St. Linus Festival Bike and Blade Parade.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
For clarification, since this has already passed, it was on September 7th, as indicated in the letter, is it, I would imagine it's a received note and file, this item?
Yeah, that's right.
Doesn't require an action at this point? So, Madam Chair?
Moved it last time.
No, it wasn't on the agenda because it missed the deadline, but I know it was on Friday, so I move to receive note and file this item?
Support.
Supported by Councilman...
None pro temp. Back as if it was back then.
Time machine.
Legal term.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have under reports from mayor, DHPEA agreement and extension of benefits with the extension, I'm sorry, with the exception of pension benefits to the non-union employees of the city of Dearborn Heights.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but I think I'd make a motion to move this to a study session. I need to get a lot more clarification on this. I just think it's, I don't know enough about it to be able to, to give a good yes or no answer on that.
Okay. Seconded by Councilman Bazey?
No, I was just going to say, I totally agree.
Okay, I do too. It's kind of...
It's my Mr. Miyaki when you discuss it, because if you guys had asked me some real tough questions, I would have had difficulty getting through some of it, so he needs to be here to explain.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
I'm just thinking, maybe we need to amend this motion, because it...
I'm just thinking, maybe we need to amend this motion, because 18, 11A, we need something for both of them at the same time.
Yeah, well, when it gets there, I think we're going to have...
We can address it as we go along, I guess.
Separately, okay.
Yeah, don't want to skip over.
Yeah, I concur.
Okay, me too. Okay, we will move that to a study session.
Did he have a vote?
All those in vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under reports from city officials, we have Councilman Bazey, city budget amendment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I move the council to adopt budget amendment to the same as it was in May 2018 as follows. Reduce the grant coordinator from 80 to 59, 59,400. Reduce the comptroller salary from 75,000 to 67,500. Reduce the HR director salary from 75,000 to 67,500. Reduce the emergency manager coordinator salary from 75,000 to 54,000. Reduce the ordinance director salary from 75,000 to 54,000. And remove the investigative service secretary position. The total, to go to the general fund is 101,000, I'm sorry, 117,000, 117,600. Any pay raises added position will be assessed at a later date as outlined in 9A.
Okay.
Second the motion.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton seconded it. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Can I read the statement real quick? I'm proposing to reinstate the original pay as it was back in, to the May, May pay due to the, was disapproval by an overwhelming residence indicated that elected council must address critical issues at the city prior to increasing pay, using taxpayers' dollars to select employees. And some of the issues included, includes lack of usable parks for recreational facility to children and their families. inability to identify the issues with sewer system, which is causing basements and street flooding and illegal dumping in our street sewers. inability to open five days a week so our residents can have access to the city hall five days a week as other cities. inability to cut our own grass. inability to resolve the TPOM contract without all legal fees that we're incurring on a monthly basis. And due to the disproportionate, proportion, treatment of residents who apply for permits to build or improve their homes. And majority of our street lights are out. And again, as an elected councilman by the residents of our city, I'm, I am not opposed to the pay increases, however, given to, given the state of our city, I agree with residents that our leadership should be accountable and should resolve these issues prior to awarding select employees with increases.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Well, I, I, when this came up before, we were going to have a, a study session. I don't know what the investigative service secretary position is or who does that, or the, the grant coordinator salary. I know we had a comptroller leave, and we've hired a new comptroller, and I don't know what the agreement was, but...
Well, at this time, I, do you guys want to, you want to vote on it, or you want to discuss it further?
Discuss it.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Personally, I would like to see something like this. If this is a proposal, whenever you're going to reduce 70 people's salaries, they are currently employed by the city, they have already gotten the raises, definitely we'd need to see something like this in a study session. That's what we were supposed to do before, that's what we had agreed that we would do. Before we start reducing a lot of people's salaries, I understand he's got some, the councilman's got some concerns, but with that being the case, we would need to do, I believe, a study, a study session for something like this to make a determination if this is in the best interest of the city and the residents before we go ahead and move to reduce salaries by this amount. In addition to that, I'd like to point out, the grant coordinator's salary is paid by federal dollars, that is not a salary directly from us. So I don't know, just in that particular case, I don't know if there would be that much savings. And the other one I would like to point out is investigative service secretary position, which we had, I believe it was either a study session or during the budget time, we discussed that, and we went into details with that, where the police department felt that this is something that's very, very important to them in order to be able to do their jobs properly. So with that being the case, I just don't think it'd be a good idea for us to make a decision this quickly on something like this, not to mention, you know, the morale and what have you in the city, I just don't think it'd be a good idea personally.
At this point, I don't know what a study session would accomplish, because it's just cut and dry. We did have Plant Moran here, we were given some facts, and we were told about a letter that the city received that we were not aware of when we passed these, and I think that's what everybody's going on, is now that we are aware of certain things we weren't before, you know, it's, it's, it's up to the council.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I've never been in favor of taking people's money away. That's just not me personally, but I understand Councilman Bazey's position. I also am kind of, to say it perturbed, that salaries were increased without us knowing about it, and salaries were taken away that we awarded that were never given, and we weren't made aware of it. So that, that in turn upsets me very, very much. Somebody gets a raise, it's supposed to come to us. Somebody doesn't get a raise, it should come to us. You can't arbitrarily just give to whoever you want and take away whoever you want. That's the function of the legislative body, somebody just said that earlier. So I'm agreeing with Councilman Bazey because of that. So I am not, I am not against having a study session, but I understand Councilman Bazey's position on this, and I totally support him.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I might ask, the Councilman Muscat, I am not aware of giving anybody a raise without your approval or a decrease. I don't know, can you give me an example?
I will give you an example, I will give it to you tomorrow on the phone. I, I don't want to give it out in public.
Yeah, we don't want to make it public.
This is not a public thing.
We have that information though.
Well, you gave me an accusation that I did, and I did not.
And I will, and I will give it to you tomorrow. It's right, you should be, you should be able to look at on your own list of who makes what.
Well, I did not.
I'll tell you what, I'll give you the piece of paper, and you do it. Okay? Because I have it here. Because a salary was also given by this council to someone, and it wasn't approved by you.
You didn't honor it.
It didn't honor it, okay?
Oh, I think I know which one you're talking about. But, but the council puts dollars in, I have the right to whether or not they get their increase.
Then we have the right to do what we need to do also.
You can do it, but it's, it is, you can't operate in a, in a vac, in, in the kind of thing like...
I will, I will give this to you before I leave tonight.
I know who you're talking about now.
Okay, all right.
But if I might make a couple comments. Number one is, this is so unfair, and the difficulty that you have caused these people to operate in this city is just terrible. And what will happen is, they have been, take the first one, the grants coordinator is operating at a higher salary. You cut them back to 59,4, you now have taken them below 59,4, because for the last two or three months, they have been paid at the 80. So in order to get to 59,4, they are coming at below 59,4. This is so chaotic, you can't run a city by getting people, and that's what I feel this is. And you need to be responsible, and if you have a difficulty, call me, and we can talk about it. But to sit here and do this to these individuals is unfair. And if this passes, I will veto it, you can be assured, and, and it's just not right what you're doing.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I think it's important to know that, that the city budget is always a fluid document and can always be amended. I mean, certainly, you know, I understand what you're saying, Mayor, I can't imagine you have to roll it back to July 1st for the compensation, isn't this moving forward from the state? So you wouldn't be, you know, taking back from them necessarily what they've already been paid. I think what I'm hearing is this concern because we have really the financial cloud, I'll call it, with the unfunded liabilities, and we had a study session on that. We know what Plant Moran said, we know what the Department of Treasury is saying with an action plan is due by mid-November. We, we talked about that, but I really think that's where the concern is, am I correct?
Yes.
And understanding that's where we are, and we're hearing from residents that have those concerns as well. But know that this can always, if this passes, we can and should always revisit that.
Absolutely.
You know, once we work through the struggle that we're facing right now.
I agree, and that's what I put down, yeah.
People quit, what do we do when they quit?
Well, at this point, we can only pay what we can afford.
Well, Madam Chair, I mean, to that point, and, and I would agree that this needs some further study. Our big expenses are picking up the trash and police and fire. This is a drop in the bucket. So I recognize Councilman Bazey's comments about, you know, streetlights being out and so forth, but these particular positions and these increases, that's, you know, that's a drop in the bucket compared to our trash.
Okay, I mean, and just for clarification, DTE is not, I mean, I'm sorry, the lights being out is DTE's responsibility, not the city's.
We pay a monthly fee per light, and the maintenance is DTE, not the city of Dearborn Heights. And the other thing is, none of these affect water and sewer, they're all general fund. And as was pointed out, it's not 117,600 going to general fund, because the first person is the CDBG director, and he is federally funded. So any changes in his particular salary, those can't go back in the general fund. If you don't, if we don't pay them, it just goes back to federal government.
And that position is making 75,000.
Okay, all right, please be recognized.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, when I first looked at this a few months back, I was, you know, I was against, I'm not in favor, like Councilman Muscat said, you know, giving somebody something and taking it away. However, I've, I've gotten a lot of calls from residents, and, and they're our bosses, the residents are, and I haven't gotten one call that said, you know, give everyone all these raises. Now, if these raises were to be taken away, believe me, we would rapidly go through every one of them, and some of these people are hardworking people, and they may deserve this raise. And some of them may only deserve half of that raise. But we will do our due diligence and go through each one, and make it fair for these people what they're, what they're doing, and what's fair for the citizens of Dearborn Heights. Because these are, these are not giant raises, I mean, they are individually, but there's just a few of them, $117,000 isn't going to make or break the state. But it's, it's the point, you know, it's, it's the, what's, what's going on? Like I said, there was people that were awarded raises that weren't getting them, from my understanding, I'm, I'm not sure, I want to check into that. I can't, I can't, with an honest conscience, go ahead and approve all this without doing some studying on it, and we will, if these people deserve raises, believe me, they'll get them.
Yeah, because it is fluid. Yes, Councilman Abdullah?
I'd also like to point out, just as a refresher, that we went through something like this when we had the situation with the assessor's office a few years back. And if you recall, some of the council people that were here, you know, we had continuous turnover with assessors coming and going, coming and going, it seemed like almost every other week. And the biggest problem, having talked to a couple of them at the time, was clearly the amount of pay that they were getting paid. When we eventually went to Tony Fuoco with a contract, you know, as a contractor, and that, thank God, has worked out very well for the residents and for the city. With that being the case, when you lose, potentially lose somebody because you gave them a salary which we all voted on and approved it, you gave them a salary, and now you take it back, again, back to the morale situation, and you get somebody that's been with our city, and I'm not giving anybody any ideas, but just, like, looking directly at one right now, the HR director, which does a wonderful job in our city, has been here for, I don't know, 15, 20, whatever it is, years, and you take, give them their salary, and I'm not giving her ideas, you give her a salary, and then you take it right back away from them, you know, you take the potential of somebody like that quitting, and if they did, that is just not good for business. We should have voted this down back then if that was the case, or wait until next year's budget, but to give them something and then take it right back, I just don't think it would be a good move.
I just think part of the problem is, there were certain things we were not made aware of before we approved that budget. Had we known it, we wouldn't be having this vote.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
As much as I want to support this, you know, and I, I mentioned this once before, that the Plant Moran audit was coming, and I felt that we should have been waiting on the Plant Moran audit before we have done anything. There are things in a Plant Moran audit that enlightens a lot of things, and, and if a study session is needed for this, I would approve a study session, but if the council wants to, if there's a, a motion for a study session, second it, we can vote on that, or we can vote on Mr. Bazey's...
I think the motion is, as it was read by Mr. Bazey at this point. Okay, do we have any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I think, now, I'm, I've been bouncing back and forth on this, and I, I think it would be a good idea. Now, this is, this is Councilman Bazey's research, and unfortunately, I haven't had the time to talk to him about all these, you know, he explained just now things that happened, and I understand we do need money in certain areas, but I think that I would be in favor of a study session, going over each one of these individually, and I mean, these are ra, big personal raises, I wish I would have gotten, I know their salaries were reduced at one time, and then they're giving it back, but it's, it's a big cut, and we got to think about what we're doing to these people, but it is, we have, we have issues with this. That's why I'm saying, well, I'm going to vote yes on this, now I'm thinking, no, I'm going to vote no, I want a study session. Right now, because I'm really indecisive, I, I would vote for a study session on this. Not to upset anybody, but I think it's fair to everyone involved that we talk about each one of these individually and go from there.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to echo that, so, I don't know what a comparable salary is in other cities, and I did start looking it up for, for example, comptroller, or CDBG director, or ordinance, and then, I don't know, does the chief want to say something about?
Well, right now, this is most facts. Madam Chair, I do have something, we do have the comparables.
I can't talk?
And we did, and of course you can, Chief, but we'll finish here real quick, we have the comparables that was presented to us, you know, it was during the budget hearings, we know, we have to remember that there's a difference between four and five days, and different responsibilities in different cities, but what I'm hearing is, and all due respect, Councilman Bazey, maybe consider amending your motion to move it to study session, because you have several council members that have questions, I don't know.
I, I don't really, well, as we say, it's fluid, and this is proving our budget is fluid. We can go back and forth, we could do this and then have a session to see if we need to go back or what we can do to change it back, because we really can't afford to pay what we don't have.
And this was mentioned before.
I mean, we can go back, like we said, you know, if we start at this, and then we can go back and have the study session and figure out where everybody should be at.
Councils here, may I be recognized for that you could, someone could make a motion to refer at this point, that could end up being voted on, or you could go ahead with the main motion. Either, either one would be in order at this point.
Well, I think the motion on the table is to vote on it, is that correct?
Yes.
That's my understanding, because it's been seconded?
There is a second for it.
Yes.
I say what Council Miyaki is saying is that we could refer it to a study session for a commitment.
Yes, there could be a motion made.
Because I don't think, all due respect...
We do have a motion on the table right now to vote on it, so we should probably just vote on it.
Yeah.
It would be in order to end up at this point, to end up referring, to the table...
Well, we have a motion on the table, though.
If allowed, I'd like to refer, I'd like to make a motion that we refer it as to a study session.
But we still have the one motion on here still. We have to address that.
It's not Roberts rules.
All right, at this point, is there any further discussion?
I didn't mean to silverware you, I just caught my eye, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
Council Chair, it was in order to make a motion to refer, I mean, you could check with your parliamentarian, if it would be as well, but... I mean, you could check with your parliamentarian, if it would be as well, but.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. It is, it is always in order to make a motion to move to a study session or so.
Right, but we've got a motion on the table. I think they want to vote on it. We should just vote.
That's your, your call. I mean, I'm just, was asked a question.
I would second Councilman Abdella's motion to refer to a study session, just as well discussed it.
This has been gone to a study session before.
Okay. What do we want to do?
Well, Madam Chair?
I mean, who's the official Roberts Rules of Order person, I believe, would be the clerk? So, based on that, Mr. Clerk, can you tell us, clarify for us, what is the right way to move?
Well, it's, it's. It's been stated several, by Mr. Miyaki and myself, that the motion is in order, but the council chair is the.
Governing body.
Person who is in charge of this body, and that's her decision whether to move forward on the original motion or to accept a motion.
I think we'll do with the original motion, just, because it wasn't, if it would have been suggested right away, I would have done it the other way. I'm just going to go in order.
We did during the first discussion.
I know.
During the first discussion, I suggested we may take it to a study session.
All right. Um. But let's give it a study session, I guess, and then we will bring it right back at the next meeting.
What's the point of that motion?
Can we, can we vote? Can we vote on it and then take it to a study session after that vote?
No, just.
See, that's, that's what I was going to see, but.
It's one or the other.
It's one or the other. Because even if I voted for this, I'd want to have a study session.
And we could. I mean, because you could change it. It's fluid. Like I said, you can, we're changing what we approved in the budget, it can go either way.
Remember, if you vote yes, the salaries go away.
Right.
You move it to a study session, it can be talked on. So, that's.
Well, we could vote yes, salaries go away, and then go to a study session and discuss each one of these.
I mean, we're trying to resolve a money issue.
So, then we would, because the idea is to have an informed vote, to have an informed vote after a short, quick study session.
Could we do that? Could we go refer to a study session after a vote, if this was voted yes, and then go to a study session to discuss what we voted on?
Once the motion is made and passed, there would, to go to a study session doesn't make.
If I may clarify, based on, if I may clarify, based on what you're stating there, Councilman, if that was the case, we went in that direction, we'd have to vote on it right now, presumably it passes or doesn't pass, then we'd do a study session, then we'd have to bring it back to a vote again, because it is a fluid, the budget is fluid. So, yeah, you could always change the salaries or anything else for that matter, up and down at any time, even multiple times. So, yeah, it would have to be a second time that we'd bring something like this to the table. But to me, the simpler and easier way would be to put it at a study session, discuss this, and if it makes sense, we move forward. If it doesn't make sense, then we don't.
See, I'm not so much sure what we're going to be discussing. We've got money issues. I mean, if we take, we could decrease it and take it back to a study session and increase it, but not to the amount that we did originally.
See, I'm not sure if, all the, all the people that took a cut back in the day, whenever they took the cuts, if everyone is back, I've heard different stories. Okay, everybody's back to their original salary, and some, no, I've only got 2% of it. And I mean, I'd like to find out all these details on all this.
Yeah, because I think that was in 2012, wasn't it?
2012.
And how many of these employees were actually with us in 2012 when that cut was taken? Not all of them are affected.
A four-day week or five-day week?
Yeah.
Your council chair?
Councilman Abdella?
There's also other issues at hand, okay? The amounts for each one, but then, why these particular, you know, department heads? Why not other department heads?
They're non-union positions.
Okay. But I'm just saying, there's just a lot of questions that need to be answered, in my opinion, before we take a vote on something like this.
What kind of questions are we looking for?
There was a position, the deputy clerk was ignored in all of this issue. I mean, that's something we have to look into. There's, there's a lot of things that, a lot of layers to this onion that we have to get into. And it's the taxpayers' money, and I think it's, it's our duty to do our due diligence and look, look into, do the proper thing for the residents. Spend their money wisely.
Absolutely.
Let's just follow 10 minutes.
All right.
And change it later. It's fluid, as the clerk said.
It is fluid.
But to, but the budget being fluid for us, being, change it, re-change it, that, that becomes a, an administrative nightmare for anyone.
But you know what? It's, it's why it's fluid, though. There's a reason.
I'm not, I'm not going to disagree with you at all.
Yeah, because I can see both sides. I can see it all.
Yeah, that's it.
I'm just stating facts, that it is fluid either way.
As much as I want to support this.
Today, we could be increasing them, too.
Okay.
You know, it goes back and forth, and I mean, I guess what we're trying to do is justify the exact amounts that we gave.
So, I think.
Did we give too much because of our situation money-wise, or, you know?
So, I believe what, in what you're saying, is if we sat collectively at a body and discussed this, then came up with a plan, then vote on this at a study session.
We'd have to do it a meeting after a study session.
Well, we'd have a study session like in, in a week or two weeks, or a week off or whatever, and then go through this again, and, and just go through it. I mean, this is what we, we're getting paid to do.
Very well, very well paid, I might add.
Not really.
Maybe you are.
I don't know what your paycheck is, but. All right, well, then let's just vote to move it to a study session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Who made the motion to move it to a study session?
Councilman Abdella.
Who seconded?
Mr. Abdell, Councilman Abdella made the motion, and Councilman Constance supported the motion, as my notes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll schedule it for a study session. Okay.
We got to do the vote.
Yes.
We did.
Oh.
Councilman.
Okay. Councilman Bazey is opposed.
I'm opposed also.
I'm opposed, too.
Now, that was opposed to the.
Can you do a hand vote, Madam Chair?
A study session.
Please.
I wanted to vote on it.
I did, too.
We do a hand vote, please, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of study session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I don't know.
Okay. Study session is denied. So, at this point.
It was 4-3, Madam Chair.
But it's switched.
In favor of the study session.
I'm sorry.
I thought it was 4-3 in favor of the study session.
Favor of the study session.
Okay, then I missed a hand somewhere.
Revote this and then change it, just doesn't make sense to me. Just throwing it out there.
May I make a suggestion? The motion was to refer the matter to a study session. A yes vote would be to refer, a no vote would be not to refer and to turn back to the main motion, which was Councilman Bazey's main motion. So, my suggestion would be to revote, because it seems there was some confusion about what people were voting for.
Okay. All right. To move it to a study session, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Aye. Or no. One, two, three. Lisa, where are you?
I'm the yes for study session, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, there are four, four votes, not to move it to a study session. Councilman Muscat, Councilman Bazey, Councilwoman Maxwell, and Councilman Wensel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Those four voted against it, so the motion fails.
Okay.
And you have an original motion.
So, we go back to our original motion, as, like we said, it's for the budget that's Original motion was to reduce the wages back to what they were before we approved them at the budget hearing. All those in favor of reducing the wages back to where they were, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Can we get a?
I'm sorry, can I get a hand vote, please?
Yeah. Okay, those that are in favor of reducing it back to where it was before our budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One, two, we got, we got five.
Okay.
Opposed, Abdella and Constance. Motion carries.
Madam Chair?
The budget amendment carries.
Can we put this on the, or make it?
I will put it on the next one, definitely.
Agenda for a study session on this?
Let's do that.
Can we do it as soon as possible?
I will do it the next study session, if you want to do it next week, or if you want to do it just before the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have Chief of Staff, Ann Crapp. Memorandum of Agreement of the Water Residential Assistance Program.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, City of Dearborn Heights, memo of agreement regarding the renewal of the Water Residential Assistance Program rap is outlined in 9B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdella. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Corporation Counsel Miyaki, propose underground utility easement for Verizon Wireless.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move, council approve the underground utility easement for new power Verizon Wireless relative to its cell tower facility located at 6045 Fenton, and authorize Mayor Palletco to execute the easement on behalf of the city. The approval is conditional upon the approval of an appropriate billing permit by the Building and Engineering Department, as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdella?
I drove, who'd be, who'd be best to answer questions on this?
I just want to clarify, Councilman, you were also talking about the approval by Waytrim. For example, rest of the motion, as I have it laid out here.
Yeah, yes, as, as outlined in 9C completely.
Okay. And Mr. John Crane, who is an attorney for Verizon, is here, if anyone has any questions. Really, the, the position that we've taken is, based on what Mr. Brooks and Mr. Sobha have ended up saying, there's, there's not a difficulty if we end up doing this, but he's here to address any questions you may have, one way or the other. Mr. Crane?
Councilman Abdella?
Could you go someplace where they can, yeah, I want to go over there.
What I was wondering about is, is I drove by, just to get a little better idea visually versus the graphics that we had here. Is that going to have any type of effect on the resident directly behind it?
It's an underground easement, it will be directionally bored, we're not even going to cut up the surface, a boring machine comes in and does it.
So, no damage is going to be done to the top?
No damage to the houses, no damage.
My concern is more probably visual. Is this, are they going to be looking at some sort of an eyesore behind them, based on this change?
The day after, it'll be a two-day job to put it in. After it's done, nobody will even know it's there.
Okay, perfect.
Except Ms. Dig, if anybody else comes up.
Yeah, right, right.
Council Chair, if I may ask a question?
Council, I mean, Council.
And my understanding is, it's actually kind of more on the city side than on the resident's side. When we went out there.
That is absolutely correct. It's basically alongside, it's going to go between our shelter and the, what do you call it, the hockey rink, the dry hockey rink, or?
Yeah.
That, that area in there. And it'll be directional bore, won't even disturb the soil, except for more spare wood present.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next is Fire Chief Brogan, permission to accept safer grant.
Madam Chair.
Very much.
Councilman Abdella?
I move that we concur with Fire Chief David Brogan requesting permission to accept the safer grant. This grant is to fill three new positions. These positions carry a total of $554,328. The grant will cover $341,836 over the course of three years. An intention is to hire three new firefighters and promote a battalion chief on each, on each shift. And we had a study session in regards to this. By making this step, this step, we will not need to fill the second deputy chief position, as outlined in item 9D.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Ladies first.
Actually, you're the making the motion, which parliamentary procedure means you get the floor first.
Councilman Abdella?
Okay. Just want to congratulate the chief on the job well done on this, between you and the grant writer. I mean, it's a lot of money that you're bringing into the city, so I just want to thank you and publicly acknowledge what you did. Good job.
And Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I want to add, and it is in the letter, but for the public's information, the end result is more efficient operation, increasing the safety of our citizens and our firefighters, which I think that is the utmost concern for all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Gavin, police vehicles approval to purchase and pay.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move, council concur with Chief Lee Gavin in the authorization of purchase and pay for seven 2019 Ford Police Intercepter Utility Vehicles at a cost of $27,083 per vehicle, as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazey?
Are those vehicles marked? I mean, are they patrol vehicles, or?
They're going to be. Yes, they will be marked.
Thank you, Chief.
They are SUVs, the patrol cars that we have out there.
Thank you, Chief.
Council Chair?
Okay, Councilman Wensel?
Hey, Chief, these vehicles are, the cost of $27,000, that's coming right from the dealership, so to speak, and then there's going to be prep work done on them? Or is this?
Sure, that's the state, the Macomb County bid. That's the best price. We get them, and then we have to pay additional money to get all the equipment on them, which sometimes runs up to $10,000 per car, $15,000. Your screens, your cameras, computers, all that stuff.
So that includes the computers, like you just said?
Not in the base price. No, this is just.
No, not in that price, it's additional, up to $10,000.
Additional, up to $10,000, $15,000.
That's still pretty cheap, $37,000 for a vehicle fully equipped. Yeah.
Vehicle.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Deputy Chief, Police Chief Petrie, Laptops and Mini Towers Approval to Purchase and Pay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Adella.
I move that we concur with Deputy Chief Michael Petrie requesting Counsel approval for the purchase and payment for the following: 10 Dell Latitude 5590 BTX laptops at $1,156.30 per; 20 Optiplex 7060 Mini Tower XCTO $999.05 per. And the reason for this is, this equipment will be used for all areas of the Police Department to help the Police Department. And many of the current computers are out of date and are becoming non-compliant for Clemis. And this has been budgeted for in our capital expenditure for the year, which was $31,543.96 as outlined in item 9F.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Well.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion's carried. Next, we have Deputy Police Chief Petrie, L3 Communications Service Agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Move to concur with Police Deputy Chief Michael Petrie, approve the payment for the L3 Mobile Vision Inc. for the service contract with Mobile Vision Back Office. The cost of the contracts is $8,028 we paid from Police Department Contractual Services. So, one-year service contract expires on November 11th, 2018. Is that correct? Is that a correct date, November 11th, 2018? That's, because it's a one-year contract, so I imagine it expires in 2019.
No, the current one is expiring on November 11th.
Expiring, yes.
The new one would take place from then forward.
So it would be a one-year contract, expires in 2019, that was my point. Item is 9G.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Gribble, Authorization to Sell John Deere Gator and Field Grooming Equipment.
Madam Chair, if I might, could you refer this back to the administration? I believe this equipment would be usable in the DPW Building and Maintenance Group, and so I'm not so sure we want to sell this.
Okay.
So, if you refer it back to the administration.
Do we, do we have a, they want to sell it? Is there someone that agreed to buy it for that much? Or is that something you're asking for? Yeah, I mean, is this, that purchase price?
Well, okay.
I mean, is that, is that something that you're going to put it out for sale for $4,500 or?
Well, we were, I was talking with Mr. Mackey, who was getting involved in this, because that's what the equipment was allocated to, and so that was a price that, you know, I came up with. And then I was made aware through the mayor that the Building and Maintenance Department is in need of, possibly in need of a gator, so that's why I went.
No.
Yeah, I hate to have it sold for $4,500 and then come back to the council and ask for $11,000 or $12,000 to replace something that we have internally. That's what was it put on the agenda in the first place?
Yeah, I guess, why were we getting, does this cut the grass or does it just groom in the fields? I'm not familiar with what the equipment is exactly used for.
Well, it's basically a John Deere gator, which is a utility vehicle that has a.
Oh, the four-wheel drive.
And you can use it for any type of multi-purpose.
So it's a four-wheel drive.
So.
What we added to it is we added a tiny attachment to be able to do our diamonds in addition to being able to transport things.
Got it. But now, we don't have any diamonds that we're going to be grooming with that, correct?
That's correct.
So why would we keep it, then, if we don't have diamonds to groom?
The gator could be removed.
What would we do with the gator, then? What would the gator's purpose be?
I'll refer that back to the mayor.
Mayor?
I was out of curiosity, I mean, can we get it equipped a different way or something? I know we're not going to plow in snow with it.
Currently, right now, the Building and Maintenance Department has a gator that is used at Parkland Park as for our park rangers to move trash from one end of the park to the other end of the park, supplies, other things.
Okay.
It is on its last leg. It is, it's 20 years old, it's just about done. Repairs are getting more and more expensive on it. The mayor asked, the mayor and Director Gribble were talking about maybe Building Maintenance buying it.
9A.
So, that's why they're asking it to be referred, because that is going to be dead soon. And then we'll have to come in front of you for about $10,000 for a new one.
So why was this put? I mean, it's a waste of time to put it on the agenda and pull it right now during a council meeting. What's the purpose behind?
Well, we apologize, but at the department head meeting on Monday, I brought the question up. I didn't think of it when I approved it for the agenda on Tuesday, and since I had both directors there, I asked them if, I asked all the directors, does anybody have a use for this? And DPW said they did, so that's why I'm bringing it up right now.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Well, how old is this gator? Is it new, newer one?
2013.
13.
So, it's what, five years old?
Oh, 2013, oh, okay. 2013? And the condition is in good condition? It's not going to, there's no issues with it? Where's it, where's it at right now? Is it over at Richard A. Young Center?
No, it's located over at Central Park.
Okay, all right. So it's in, it's in good running condition, as far as we know. It's been maintained by the city.
Correct.
Probably, okay, all right, thanks.
That's all right. It's okay. Yeah, we can just remove it. I mean, you're pulling it, right?
We have to make a motion to refer it back to the administration. So I move to refer it back to the administration.
Okay. We'll take a vote.
We need a second.
We need a second.
We need a second vote.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion further?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
You know, I understand everything that's going on here, and I know that elite sports training could get, use a break, but in the best interest of the city, at this time, I think it's better if we keep it for ourselves right now.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes. Councilman Muscat is opposed.
Me.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. And Councilwoman Melanowski Maxwell is opposed. Okay. Next item on the agenda, where are we now?
11A.
11A.
I got it.
We've got to move that to.
Ordinances and Resolutions, Rough Draft of Retirement Ordinance H-18.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Move to refer this item to study session, please.
Second.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
The council can do whatever they wish with this. This was at the direction I thought of the council. It mainly affects Mr. Ancrap, and that's why this thing is on. And the attachment for 8C is related to the same thing, because we don't do ordinances just for one person. So, you might want to consider doing a first reading for him, but it's up to you.
Madam Chair.
We've got a motion to put it to a study session at this time.
Yep.
I think, okay, Councilman Bazey seconded it. Is there any discussion?
Haven't we done in the past for individual people?
You can do an emergency read.
No.
We did one for you, I believe, with individuals.
It was for. It's always based on a group. It is not for a specific individual.
We could read it for the first time and then.
I think there's too many questions on it. It's too bad, because I don't, I don't understand either. I've got questions that I need answered to.
I just want to give you the background as to why this is here.
Right, but it's not just Mr. Ancrap, it's a bulk one, and it includes other people too, correct?
Yeah, well, here's the thing. This is, this is extremely rough.
Yeah, see, that's part of it.
Part of the difficulty is, normally, these are done in the context of extending benefits, and we don't have the, we don't have the contract normally that we would. And at the same time, we normally will end up doing them with regard to a slice or a class of people within a certain thing, so we don't end up having someone potentially turning around and making a discrimination claim. So, this isn't, this isn't ready to be adopted by any means.
Okay, and then we can get to our study session right away, too. Go ahead, Councilman Adella.
For Counsel Gary, I mean, along the same lines, since we're speaking of it, what is the status on that contract for the, for the union members?
Status of that contract is it is still outstanding, and it looked like there was something going on, and then I was made privy to an email from Labor Council, which basically made it look like that was all blown up. It's extraordinarily hard to predict.
Okay, let's just move.
This might be something that we would discuss in the enclosures.
We're getting off the subject here.
There are things that I would probably say that would not make certain people happy, and we would rather be.
Okay, at this time, we're getting off the subject. I guess we need to concentrate just on this rough draft of Retirement Ordinance 8-18. Is there any further discussion in regards to that particular ordinance?
Well, Counselor Chair, if possible, maybe Counsel Miyaki can give us a, you know, brief overview of what this is about, because.
Well, I mean, it's already.
We're going to move it to a study session, and it's.
We can do it at the study session.
He did say it was a rough, and it gives him more time to polish it up more, too.
We're going to do the study session the same time as we do.
8C.
8C. And Mr. Miyaki is going to be there, correct?
Correct, right.
My suggestion, though, is that the council think about some of the issues that are raised, because then I can have direction. Right now, I don't have a clear idea of what anyone.
So when I go through this, I can send you an email thinking of my questions?
That would be absolutely.
Or, you know what? Why don't everybody send their concerns to me, and I'll send one email, so we don't just bombard them with seven different emails?
Well, this here, I mean, I'm concerned about that statement that you made, Mr. Miyaki, that part of, part of difficulty in drafting this ordinance is that it assumes that the city and TPOM will enter into a collective bargaining agreement. So that's why we wanted to move into a study session, especially with that statement.
Okay.
Because there's nothing with the TPOM contract yet.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have New Business, Business License Renewals for Donovan VFW Number 78 located at 25620 Van Born and Randy's Robandale Bar at 25122 Warren.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we redo the business license for the Donovan Post, VFW Post on Van Born and Robandale's Bar on Warren.
Support.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have comments from council members.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I'd like to discuss, got a few phone calls from residents that live just east of Beach Daily between Ford Road and Wilson, requesting some sort of study or actually a crosswalk and traffic control device between Doc's Dater and Wilson, because kids crossing Beach Daily there, I mean, those kids in a few blocks aren't bused. They're actually walking to school and crossing Beach Daily, which forces them to walk either to Ford Road or all the way to Wilson and come back toward Crestwood. So, is there a way we can look at something like that, or does that have to come from the school? Can anyone answer that question?
I'll have our Traffic Bureau look into it. We already discussed with school, we're not going to put a crossing, school crossing guard in front of the parking lot there. We gave, we've brought up some options before. We could put a bridge over at $100,000, cost to the city. So, we've looked at, you know, I've talked to you about that in the past. I'll have our Traffic Bureau look at it again and see what we can do. If we could get our residents not to back up on Beach Daily, every time we write a ticket there, the police officers are the bad people. If the citizens, the parents could go into Circle Drive at Canfield Center, there's a lot of room in there where they can circle around, they pick up their kids, and they exit on the Beach Daily.
Well, this is for the kids that walk to school from just east of Beach Daily, you know, you're talking Evangeline, Whitefield, and all those that don't get bused or parents don't drive to school, they actually have to walk either north or south to cross with a light, and then come back either north or south, depending on which way they're going, to the school.
I'll have.
Instead of having a crosswalk with a light, I mean, they have the light for the fire department now, which is only used for the fire department for exiting for emergency, but that light doesn't always.
Stay solid.
Stay solid for kids that actually want to cross the street. So that's just, you know, for the kids. I, you know, that was asked for me to bring up. I brought it up, and hopefully you'll look at it and see what you think.
I'll check again, see what we can come up with.
And then, I have another one, and I've mentioned this before. The Edison pole that went down on Amboy and Wilson in the ice storm back in April is still there tied up with a rope to another pole. That needs to be, get fixed. This is, this is insane. It's tied up with a rope. And then, the other one that I've brought up for a few years now, at Wilson and John Daly, I had measured that pole at 15 degrees a year ago. It's now over 20 degrees leaning into the street. That needs to be taken care of. That's, that's going to come down on a car, on a person. Sooner or later, that's going to give out. And, and I hate to bring this up, too, but, Mr. Chief, I got multiple phone calls Sunday about residents complaining about not getting any support for a big party that was held on Avondale with loud music. They were told we only had three cars available on a Saturday night. Now, I can only tell you what they told me. I don't know if there was only three cars or not, but it's something I think you need to address to the public.
I addressed with the citizens, I called the office, we explained to them, and we've worked with, we've discussed this issue with council, with our attorney, Mr. Miyaki. When the citizens call and a loud noise, our, us as police officers, to write a violation for that usually does not hold up in court. So, we like the residents to be the complainants on the violations. The two residents that I talked to, yes, they called, but they did not want to write a violation. The music was from 8 o'clock to 10 o'clock. We try to work with our residents. I don't think 10 o'clock is too reasonable, but I wasn't there. If the people thought it was, it was. But nobody said they wanted a violation issued. We played back our tapes, and yes, we got some calls on it. It was an, it was a, not a wedding engagement party. A lot of parking up and down Avondale. They called us and let us know about it. We maintained that the flow of traffic up and down Avondale was okay. They did park some cars out there. So, we got calls. I talked to the few residents that called and explained to them that we went out there, sure the music was a little loud. People are, we're trying to work with our residents, so that, that's all I can say.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
So, we went out there, we weren't running three cars, we had more than three cars, but at that time, we had a few arrests and a few robberies, and we checked the daily logs. So we were busy on a Saturday night between that period.
And then, Amboy and Wilson.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I had just sent an email to Controller Vance. This was a follow-up on a correspondence. I had asked some questions on ledger items in the city budget regarding Act 345. And first, I want to start by saying, to be very clear, and clarification, there is absolutely no one on this city council going after anybody's health care through Act 345. No one's trying to take anything away. We simply want oversight, right, of funds going in and out of that account, because that is taxation under Act 345. The letter I emailed originally sent, the response was presented to this council body at the table. And that letter, I sent a copy, I shared it with the council body, I also sent it to Controller Vance. There were six issues that I wanted to hear, or at least inquire, to get addressed, and five of them are accounting principles, and I just want some clarification. But the first one is an ethics question. And I'm referring to the Michigan Municipal League that, who's very reputable, and they have a Code of Ethics manual for elected officials and municipalities that talk about how you respond to an elected official. And on that letter, if you look at it, it says, "Responding to Lisa Hicks Clayton." And I want to say, first of all, I'm never about titles, it's about the service to community. However, that was on official letterhead, that was an official document submitted to this council body during a city business meeting, city council meeting. So therefore, it should have, in my opinion, as well as the Code of Ethics, been addressed to Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. The reason I'm saying this, because I think this is true for all elected officials, that we should have a relationship with our department heads and our employees, and it may be a training issue. I don't know what it is. Is it a training issue? Is that something we have to take a look at to make sure we understand how we interact and interface with each other? Because that can be considered marginalization. So that is the first thing. The accounting principles that I had sent, and I don't know, Controller Vance, if you are able to answer those this evening, I sent this email on September 6th, so it's been a little under a week, but I know you're busy, I respect your time. But there were several things that I had addressed that are shown in the budget, but not in that letter. If that letter's official letter, why aren't those line items included in the letter that was official business that include the Act 345? Everything from the insurance was not reported.
Counselor Chair, she's not here.
I'm sorry, she has left.
I'll bring it up in the exit interview, because I think she quit as a result of your actions tonight.
Okay.
But let me tell you, one of the reasons that one of those items could not be included, because she and I talked about it, there is a liability that was included on a lawsuit that the city is involved with on property taxes. It would have been foolish for us to book a line item, because we would have been telling Home Depot what the settlement amount was we expected. So, you would not want to book that and tell the whole world, because Home Depot could then know what we were going to settle on.
I understand, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to tell you that. I'll mention it to her on the exit interview.
Mr. Mayor, all due respect, that letter clearly stated that in the closing paragraph, the amount. That wasn't me who did that. That was, what was on that letter, and that document was presented as, that was a document that was into the meeting, shared. So, that wasn't, you know, again, those line items, it's accounting, and you know this as accounting principles. What we're asking is whatever is coming in through taxation of Act 345, all of our residents are taxed for that. That should be shown coming in on line items, as well as going out. We should see the money going out, and it should match up. You know, this is what the residents are being taxed for, and it is for our police and fire retiree system. That is all I'm asking. And all I asked for was clarification on those ledger items, because they weren't included in the budget.
Well, she was in the middle of an audit. We have eight plant Moran auditors. I don't know what we're going to do tomorrow, but we have eight plant Moran auditors, and nobody handled the questions.
Okay. At this time, is there any further comments?
Madam Chair, I had one more thing.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
If you'd like. Do you want to do it at the end? There was something I had for the nine eleven.
Oh, yeah. We'll do yours at the end. Councilman Abdullah?
I just want to take this moment just to pay my sincere condolences to the family of our councilman, Kozinski. Served with him, really enjoyed sitting next to him, with him sitting next to me here, and he gave me a lot of advice. He's one of the persons that had been here for a long time, and I have a lot of respect for him, and just want to pay my condolences again to the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wenzel?
Well, a couple of things. I want to make sure that all the residents know about this meeting on the Van Born Corridor. I believe it's...
19th.
September 19th, at the Richard A. Young Center. At what time?
6:00 to 8:00, I believe.
6:00 to 8:00, okay. I just want everyone to know that. And also, on Hanover Street by Heather Lane Park, there, where these houses were bought, the existing driveways for these houses are being cut out and replaced with curbs. I think there's, is that what's going to happen? I think, wouldn't it be feasible to leave the last one there in case we want to put a parking lot in there someday at the end of that park? Or who's, is the DPW in charge of that?
There can't be a parking lot. It has to be an entire green space.
Oh, that whole area cannot be a parking lot?
Correct.
No buildings. Nothing.
No, can't, no buildings or no parking?
No buildings, no cement.
No parking lot, no cement. It's got to be a natural.
The parking lot won't take in water. That's part of the FEMA grant.
Okay. All right. It was brought to my attention, and I thought it would be a good idea to keep that, but I understand that. And also, the District 7 Dads Club is now in, beginning of their flag football season. We're looking for players for flag football and cheerleaders. And if anybody has any questions, they can contact the Richard A. Young Center and get the appropriate telephone numbers to join that program. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Thank you. I too served with Joe Kozinski for quite a while. Councilman Kozinski was dead serious about his council duties. He also served on the pension board, and he'll be sorely missed. He was a real asset to the city. And then, the residents probably saw Kiwanis on the corner this last weekend for our peanut sale. Our Dearborn Heights Kiwanis Club, after many, many years, merged with the Dearborn Club. So now, it's the Dearborn Area Kiwanis. But if you buy peanuts or do anything with the Kiwanis that benefits people also in Dearborn Heights.
Okay. Well, I too want to say that Mr. Kozinski was a wonderful person. I didn't personally serve with him, but he always had kind words to say, especially after I was elected, and I appreciated everything he said. I'd also like to thank my fellow parishioners from St. Linus this weekend for showing me such a wonderful time. I met a lot of great people and reconnected with a lot of old friends. And Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Okay. So, of course, today is the 17th anniversary for the 9/11, and that is a tragedy that impacted all of our lives. And we know that day that over 3,000 lives were lost, and we want to definitely pay our respects to our first responders, who put their lives on the line to protect. Our dispatchers, our firefighters, emergency medical technicians, and police dealt with events as they happened to ensure safety and provide medical attention for others. And those individuals still experience trauma and health risks today because of that. There is a poem that I came across that I think is appropriate. I asked Council Chair if I may read this today.
Go ahead, please.
And it, just take a moment. It's titled, "Legends Will Tell. Seventeen Minutes and Seventeen Years. When Won't End How Many Tears? 8:46, the First Plane Goes In. 9:03, the Truth Within." Excuse me, I went too fast. Seventeen minutes confusion and doubt, then we knew what it was all about. Hate and treachery came to our land, and enemy from far was closed at hand. Invasion came, and it was clear, the enemy from far was very near. While we slept in ignorant bliss, we dropped our guard. It was miss. 3,000 strong were given away, never to live another day. Remember this and remember well, when you wake, the lion, legends will tell. Lexington to Valley Forge, our fight never dies. Pearl Harbor to 9/11, you will forever hear our battle cries. Seventeen minutes and seventeen years is not enough to shed the tears. But hear this clear and hear this now, we will never give up, we will never bow. Remember this and remember well, when you wake, the lion, legends will tell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, at this time, we will open it up to announcements in regards to our community.
Just wanted to talk about a couple of quick items at the library. First off, tomorrow, Wednesday, September 12th, at 7:00 PM at Caroline Candy Library, we will be talking about how to live to a healthy 100. Dr. Joel Kahn, join Dr. Joel Kahn as he discusses the exciting field of longevity science. What can we do starting today to enjoy the golden years we worked so hard for? Come on out and find out. Next, I'm calling this one a bit ahead, because it wasn't on our normal program schedule, because this was a recent addition. Thursday, October 18th, at 7:00 PM at Caroline Candy Library, join sports writer Keith Gave as he talks about his book, "The Russian Five: A Story of Espionage, Deception, Bribery, and Courage." Follow the stories of the Russian Five from when they were drafted in 1989 until they hoisted the cup in 1997. So, that should be interesting. Finally, I wanted to announce that friend of the library, Ed Spokowski, has been added to our Wall of Honor at the library for his tireless contribution to the Dearborn Heights library system. He helped deliver snow for our summer Santa programs. I got it over from the ice rink. And is relentless in his support of our semi-annual book sale. So, congratulations, Ed, on that. I also wanted to concur with everyone on Joe Kozinski's kind words. He was always, he was always a model to me. He was always happy, and I was always glad to shake his hand and talk to him, so. All that's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Madam Chair.
I'd like to echo that about Ed. Ed's a pretty remarkable guy. He, not only is he involved in the library a lot, but he does a lot with the Watershed Stewart Commission. He does stuff at Kensington Park, nature trail talks. I mean, the guy's really involved, and he deserves this honor.
Thank you. We have community?
Superintendent?
Superintendent? Yes, this is your part. I was waiting for public comments. Oh, no, yeah, no. This is your, this is your second, because it's a community.
All right, thanks. Okay. My name is Jen Mast. I'm the superintendent of Dearborn Heights School District Number 7. I was placed in this position in April of 2017 on an interim basis, and then I was hired permanently in July. So, I've done this job for a little over a year. I'm very quick to communicate with city officials, whomever I need to. I don't generally plan to come to do this, because I know what this feels like, and I don't want to be blindsided, and so I just want it to be known. I tried not to do that before I came here. My main reason for being here is I'm looking for some answers. I've not gotten a response from the people that I contacted that I thought were in the proper chain of command, and so this was the last step in that order. I'm here in regards to the Eaton Senior Center, which is located in my school district. That building, for those of you who don't know the history, has been owned by the district. It was a school at one time. Back in the 70s, the building was leased to the city for $1 a year to be used as the senior citizen center. I do have the lease that goes along with that building. We resigned the lease in 2016 for 10 years, and I'm not going to read the lease to you, but the lease does state in there that the city is responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of that building. District 7 is not responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that building. However, with that being said, in good faith and in being a good neighbor, District 7 has done many things and paid for many things for the maintenance and upkeep of that building over the years, when things arose that we felt were important to get fixed for the safety of our community. We've repaired cement. We've abated floor tiles that needed to be abated for asbestos. And last year, we paid just under $200,000 to replace the roof. I have walked through the building several times over the course of the year, and I have met with different people. I've met with Bill Zimmer. I've met with the mayor. I have met with, the last time I walked through, Kim Coniston was kind enough to walk with us, because Kim Coniston has tried to do many things to help. She has some budget constraints, and she obviously has a boss too that gives direction to her, but she has been very helpful. Anytime I've asked her, and she was very willing to come and do the walkthrough with us that day, to show us things that she's already in the process of doing. So, I do know things are being worked on. But we did make a list that day, and I'm just going to read it quickly. It's nine things. These are things in the Eaton Center that need to be repaired. Holes in the walls of the library bathroom and the main hallway outside of the cafeteria need to be covered. Floor tiles need to be abated and replaced in rooms 5, 8, 10, 12, the cafeteria and the hallways. Ceiling tiles need to be replaced in rooms 5, 8, 10, 11, 12, and the hallways. Concrete work is needed in the courtyard and the front entrance ramp. There's peeling paint that should be tested for lead, removed, and repainted on the courtyard overhang and the wavy roof in the front of the building. Ceramic tiles are coming off the front of the building and need to be replaced or removed. Cement ceiling in the storage pantry of room 12 has water damage that needs to be repaired. The office bathroom floor tiles need to be replaced. All toilets in the building are still at child heights, which is extremely difficult for the seniors to use. A remedy is needed for that as well. After doing that last walkthrough, which was on August 9th, Kim Coniston was with us. I had a couple of board members that accompanied me, and Kristen, the manager at the senior center, walked with us as well. I came back to my office. I compiled the list of notes that I had taken, and then again, sent that time to Mr. Gribble, my email that explained what we had done, and I attached the list of complaints. I did in my email, I'm not shy, so I did in my email ask very clearly for him to respond and give me a plan of action to have those things fixed, and a timeline for how they would be fixed. And if they weren't going to be scheduled to be fixed, I wanted an explanation for why not. I waited a week and did not hear anything back from Mr. Gribble. At that time, I sent an email to the mayor. I asked the mayor to look into what I had tried to find out. I told him that I had sent the email a week ago and that I had not heard anything in return. I attached my list to him as well. That email was sent to the mayor on August 28th, and I have yet to hear anything. So, after a year, I feel like I've been patient. I feel like the community members have been patient. And in honesty, you know, a lot of times, especially with social media, when community gets upset about something, they just see that building as being a District 7 building. They don't realize that you own that building. They think that I own that building. And so, when the comments start flying on social media, everybody gets mad at me. So, not that I'm willing to take the heat at times, which is fine, but something needs to be done. That building needs to be fixed, and these things need to be done. I feel like the district has gone above and beyond to try to help the city with things that need to be done at the Eaton Center over the last few years, and I feel like the city needs to step up. And I'm not sure how else to get an answer on my questions when I don't get returns to phone calls and emails.
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
Yesterday, in fact, because I received your email, there was a commission of aging meeting Monday night at 6:00. In fact, Council Chair was there. You were there, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. And most of those items were addressed at that meeting, plus some others, because we had three seniors there. So, with that information and a couple other items, we need to get those addressed. In fact, a couple items I authorized, go ahead and get them fixed. I'm as frustrated as you are about them. That's why I didn't respond, because I knew that meeting was going to be yesterday, and I wanted to see if there were other items. The other thing is, I've been on a regular basis going through both the North End and the South End senior citizen, and I've been frustrated with some of the tiles like you and I've mentioned. That's why I authorized to go out and fix them, get the tiles, and let's get this fixed, because this has taken a long time. I apologize, I hadn't responded to you, but that was the reason, and not a whole lot of time has gone on. I could have sent you a quick email and said, "I got this meeting on Monday, the 10th, and I'll get back to you." But we did go through the list, and it's kind of a punch list, and we have every intentions of getting all that stuff fixed, and on a very timely basis. And I made the commitment, as both council members can tell you, that I just said, "Go ahead, let's get the dollars spent, let's get it fixed."
So, is it possible for me to get a timeline with that punch list that says when those things are going to be, expect to be finished?
Mr. Gribble, if you can...
Yeah, since my name was mentioned, and I did receive your email, and I do apologize for not getting back to you, but because you asked for a timetable, I couldn't answer you, because I didn't have the timetable. We have met with the abatement company, Kim Coniston, and are working on getting that price. We have identified the tile issue. We did try to attempt to get the tiles corrected. They're 9-inch tiles. The tiles they make now are 12. We attempted to use old tiles initially to do the repairs. It didn't work out. They were way too brittle. The person trying to install them, they just kept breaking on them. So, we have met with the abatement company. Do we have a price?
I emailed it to you.
Okay.
Well, let's put, let's put the list together and the due date.
That's one thing. The other thing, I just, I did forward all the other items on to our building maintenance department, who is responsible for the maintenance of our buildings, and I was waiting for a timetable from them, so then I could respond to you. So, we are working on it. It's just that I couldn't give you a timetable. And my answer to you would be is, I'm working on it. Would have been, maybe I should have responded to you with that.
Well, in all due respect, this is a pretty busy time of year for me right now, and I have stayed diligent following up on these things. I get it, we're all busy, but all it would have taken was a quick email from either one of you to say, "We're working on it. I'll get back to you," and then I would be home with my kids right now and not standing here.
I apologize.
Thank you. Any other? For me?
Let's get a response in a week to her with the council chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Muscat?
I'm hoping that, I went through that building, and I gave Mr. Mayor a call, and I think he was as livid as I was. When I found, and I know you're going to know what I'm talking about, when someone hired someone to fix asbestos tiles on that floor with a grinding machine. And the person who did that doesn't have a clue on what they were doing. A Home Depot guy, I know how to do that. Like, back down on the farm, we do everything. Okay? Doggone it, we're talking about lives here. We're not talking about farm animals. That was appalling, and I apologize to you, because when I saw it, I couldn't believe my own eyes. Made a phone call to Mr. Mayor, and I don't know who authorized that person to come in and do that job.
If the city needs a recommendation on abatement, we can help you with that.
But never again should anyone touch anything with asbestos without doing the proper abatement. Period. End of sentence. Okay? And not to get an email back from someone, a city official, is uncalled for. No more than 24 hours to 48 hours should have went by without someone in your position not to get an email back.
I appreciate that.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Superintendent Mast, you know, thank you especially for, and D. 7, for the, and I'm a taxpayer in D. 7, for the roof. That roof was a big issue. I actually had a commercial roofer go up and look at it and talk with our building director, Bill Zimmer. It was a rubber roof, and was, according to this gentleman, leaking at the seams. But, you know, there was all this talk that it was going to cost $700,000, and we should close the center, so it's a great facility.
If it had cost $700,000, we'd be closed. So, no, not that much. But it did come out of our building and site fund, and as, you know, we use that for projects for the schools too. So, it was a, you know, it was a sacrifice for our students and our programs to pay $200,000. We typically budget, you know, that for a major project. We have roofs in our district that need to be replaced, that are on schedule to be replaced too. So, it was something that we did in good faith, and we, that, you know, ultimately, that'll probably be our building again someday, and we do want it taken care of, but we want the city to uphold the lease that they agreed to.
It's a great facility, yes, thank you.
Councilman Wenzel?
Do you, are you looking for reimbursement on the roof?
I would love reimbursement on the roof.
Is that possible?
I think that's part of our contract, isn't it, to reimburse you?
It is in the lease.
Council Chair, I think that would be something that would need to be referred. If we have an obligation to maintain, normally doesn't deal with roofs, walls, anything of that nature.
So, if a roof is leaking on a building, we wouldn't, you wouldn't, you don't consider that part of the maintenance and upkeep? I can let you see the lease, if you'd like to.
Did you say that you replaced the roof?
We replaced the entire roof. It was $194,000.
But that's not the same, is it, as a leak, is it? So, the point is, is that that is not the same, and that is a very...
Do you have a building inspector that goes through that would maybe look at that and say, "A roof needs to be replaced," or "Doesn't need to be replaced"?
Well, if a roof needs to be replaced, that's a far different thing than maintenance normally is looked at, right? And that's what my point is. And if the council wants to end up expending whatever it was, it would be an appropriate thing for legal counsel to look at it, just like it would be an appropriate thing for your legal counsel to look at it as well.
We don't have legal counsel look at a roof before we get it replaced, we just get it replaced.
I'm talking about the legal obligation. I'm sure Mr. Collins has looked at things as well.
Of this lease? Mr. Collins did look at this lease before I started having all these conversations. I asked who was responsible for insurance and liability and all of that. I'm not a lawyer, but I would venture to say that this council and the community would say that if it says in here, "You're responsible for maintaining those buildings," replacing a roof would be in that responsibility.
I would beg to differ, and we can discuss that some other time.
Your council can discuss that with you. Anything else for me?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else? Have any...
We have a resident that has...
Okay. Resident, please. Limited to three minutes, state your name, address.
I'm going to piggyback on Superintendent Mast. My name is Suzanne Todd, Cademy Street. Oh, we can double dip. Some of our people can get their salary and their pension at the same time, but now it's a legal thing. Oh, what the heck if some seniors are harmed if a roof isn't replaced? Oh, what the heck if District 7 has to use their money to repair that roof? Shame on this administration for not taking part and paying for part of that roof. Shame on you, Mayor Pletko.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step up to the microphone, state your name, and limit it.
Hi, my name's Angela Benegas, I live on Dwight Street. Denise, I'd like to thank you for at least taking the time and returning my call since I couldn't get other people to answer me whatsoever. I got a lot of concern about what's going on in my little square mile of neighborhood between Ford Road and Warren and Inkster and Beach Daily. It's been a disaster. The roads are crumbling, everything's falling apart in that neighborhood. Denise, in City Council, I'd like you to look at some of the pictures I've taken through the neighborhood, please. Now, I've been a resident here for 18 years and have literally watched the city fall apart. We have a lot of problems that need to be addressed. The condition of our neighborhood roads is a disgrace. Many of the streets are riddled with potholes, sewers are caving in, and curbs are falling apart. We also have sewers that are completely missing. The DPW's answer to that is to put a metal plate over the sewers. We have winter time coming. What's going to happen when the plows come through? Is it going to take a kid in the dark walking to school in the morning to fall into one of those holes? When is this stuff going to be addressed? This is ridiculous. Another big concern is the sidewalk on Warren Avenue on the south side between Charlesworth and Amboy. I had to help a woman in a wheelchair get through on that sidewalk. It's a city sidewalk and it's impassable. That's a disgrace. And what about the trees? There seems to be a broken record. Nobody can get their trees trimmed. I have a sycamore tree in front of my house, as well as my neighbors. I have a sewer. Every time it rains, I'm out there in waiters because of my street floods, and I had to clean this mess up. 18 years I've lived in my house, nobody has ever, ever trimmed trees on our block. Never. And then we have the park behind the post office. It became the dump for the Ford Road repave. All the equipment from the construction of Ford Road sat there half the summer. I have pictures, there's leaves from last fall that have not been cleaned up in that park. There's a guardrail sitting from construction in that park. There's weeds, everything's overgrown. It's a disaster. And then we have your ordinance department. I've been dealing with them for years, over many, many, many things. And last year, your ordinance department, Mr. Mayor, became a joke. You were supposed to do a citywide sweep and check for all these residents and their violations. And when I went down and asked why it didn't happen, I was told there were too many people on vacation and they couldn't sweep the neighborhoods. We have houses in my neighborhood, the Cronin Street House, we call it the House from Hell. We have feral cats living in there. Nobody's been in that house for three years. My brother and his wife have called for three years and nobody's taken care of that house. There's a house on Haas that was given a ticket supposedly by July 31st, was supposed to be taken care of. Half the roof is missing on that house and nobody's taking care of that house. It's amazing. House after house, trees are overgrown. It's an embarrassment to come to the City Hall and go down Fenton Street where the street looks like a rippled road and the sewers caving in even on that street. This is just ridiculous. And you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you've been the man in charge since 2004. This mess ultimately lies on your shoulders. It's your responsibility to make sure your departments are doing their jobs and providing a clean, respectable, and safe environment for your residents. You, Mr. Mayor, have failed. You need to be held accountable for the way the city has deteriorated. I may be only one resident, but trust me, I'm the voice of many people who live in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Can we have this, or do you want it bit? Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I was going to call this in, but since we're on this subject now, my wife and I went to the St. Linus Festival. And I know I've wrote this house up many times, it's right across the street from St. Linus. The weeds now that are protruding out of the backyard, you can't walk down a sidewalk. It's like watching an old Tarzan movie, you've got to take a machete and cut yourself through a path on a sidewalk. I can't believe that somebody goes down Haas, doesn't see this. It's one of the largest eyesores, right across the street from St. Linus Church, who keeps their property up meticulously. And for residents that can't walk down a sidewalk, and during the reconstruction of Haas, and I brought this up, they took the sidewalk out where you were able to walk down the street and go straight across the street to St. Linus. Now, I understand there's no walkway at St. Linus, it's a driveway, but it sure helps residents walking to church every day. And it's gone. It's grass that's not even kept up anymore. So, that's, along with that, I wanted to mention that, and that's my rant for the moment.
Thank you. All right, any other residents? Please step up to the microphone. Limited to three minutes, state your name and address, please.
I'm not surprised at all to what I heard about the Eaton Center, but I would like to remind our citizens who attended the meeting at Cadfield Center a few years back when the mayor asked for the headly override. He made the promise to the senior citizens that he will keep every senior citizen center open, and he will fix the roof, which will, at that time, said it will cost close to $200,000. And the senior citizens came, believed it, and voted, and gave the headly override. If you are surprised I'm not, the ice arena for 10 years, they never inspected it, to the point that the fire department went and condemned it, because it was hazard for our students. So, I feel with you, and I would send the city eviction notice, and I will see how Mr. Mayatki going to fight it in court. And I encourage you to do this, that's how you're going to get their attention. Sorry for turning my back. I just have a question. How many years Mr. Ankrab has with the city?
Stop it. Mr. Ankrab, can you please answer that?
Twelve and a half, thank you. I would have wished, Mr. Mayor, you'd take my words to heart, and I'm not trying to bash or be, you know, insulting. But I would have loved to see my mayor waited a few months until Mr. Ankrab left quietly with dignity his job after all this service he's done to our city. Instead, what you've done to him, take his salary away and move him from place to place. I wish you'd think about it, because you are the father of this city, you are the leader of this city. You should think about the big and the small, and the poor and the rich, not just the few who you care about. And you know who I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Step up to the microphone, state your name, address, and limited to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Dana Parrish, I live 5614 Greenlee Park. I'm sure most of the council know who I am. Quick question, the status of 5666 Greenlee Park? That's a question.
Director McIntyre?
So, we, the owner was evicted from the property?
No, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, sir. We had a meeting after the May 22nd council, and we, Mayor Pletko, myself, and you were at the meeting in his office, and the mayor spoke about having the house demolished by August. And I was under the assumption that it would be this August, not next August. So, the house is still standing, so, and no one has contacted me. And I did try and contact, tried to make contact with the mayor's office, I wasn't able to get through, so I don't, obviously there's something going on, so I'm here to find out what is going on.
I don't remember that we said that we'd have it done by August. I do know that one of the things we said in that meeting was, we had already slated three properties that, through the community and economic development department, that they had, they're going to be coming in front of council and we were going to see if they had additional funds to do, you know, to do that. I have additional funds in our demolition budget, and that's, house is one of the priorities, so...
Okay, so you don't recall it being said for August? Mr. Mayor, do you recall that?
I would have to review my notes, because I keep impeccable notes in all meetings.
I do as well.
But I don't have them here with me. But it's still planned to get this done pretty quick.
Yes, it is.
Okay, my notes are unimpeachable. Let's just say I had, I haven't recorded very well.
Yeah, I'm not denying it, we want to get it down, so we agree.
It was supposed to be done by August.
Well, clearly that's not happened, and it's not going to happen. We have two budget streams that we can get those funds from. I was gracious, it was gracious that CDBG had offered some funds to do that. We're still actually vacating the property. I met with a contractor today. He should be going, if he didn't go there today, he should be going there tomorrow to continue removing items from there. As we...
Who's this lady back here?
Yes.
There's a process, it's called a writ of mandamus. It's used, it's an order by a court to order an inferior court, or an inferior government official to do their job. If you want to get with me after this proceeding, I'm going to get with the council regarding getting a writ of mandamus against the city of Dearborn Heights. And I want to make a, I want to make a statement about the Eaton Center. There's something, it's called a, it's used in retail, well, actually, in almost all forms of leasing, other than residential. It's called a triple net lease. Triple net lease is a lease whereby the person that's leasing, the company that's leasing a property, is responsible for all forms of maintenance. It's not just repairing, patching holes. That's for things like, the roof needs to be replaced, the parking lot needs to be redone. That's the responsibility of the person that's leasing. So, it's not just one of those things where you can just argue it or debate it. We have people here who are retailers, and I'm sure they can explain to you what a triple net lease is, and that's pretty common.
Okay, so just to finish my comment, we, one of the things that we agreed upon that day in the office is that we were going to also do rodent abatement at the property, which we've been doing.
It is in the contract.
So, I'm actually glad that Ms. Parrish brought this up. And it's something that I've talked about many times when I get calls from council folks, especially, or council people, I don't want to say it the wrong way and be accused of not being respectful, but there's an order to the way we do things. The young lady that got up and showed you the pictures, her and I know each other on a first-name basis. I'm a little offended that she thinks that my department is horrible, because I have worked with her quite a bit on things that are occurring in her area. I've got one...
A lot of things I haven't taken care of either.
I agree. I agree. I agree. So, if I can just bring it around to my original point, there's an order to the way things come in. And this just happened recently, and it was on Facebook. Someone made a comment about a limb coming down on Facebook. And by the end of this conversation on Facebook, a phone call was made to the police department. I saw the limb that was on the fence on Facebook. I even know the daughter of the person where this limb came down. She was my son's kindergarten teacher. I've known her for, you know, more than 20 years. I promised her on Facebook that it would be addressed on Monday. It was just a limb. It wasn't dangerous, it wasn't harming anybody, it probably could have been picked up by an average person and moved over. But it escalated to the point where a phone call was made to our police department as it was an emergency. A DPW person was called in on overtime to come literally take this off of the fence and set it off to the side. So, the squeaky wheel syndrome, right? I have people that call every single day, some of these ladies I've been dealing with, they have issues on their block. Everyone has some kind of issue. And because you come, and no disrespect to anybody, but, you know, I just lost $20,000 of my pay today, I have to figure out what I'm going to do now. Because I've been giving 150% of myself, and I told myself I was not going to get up and talk about this tonight, I was going to let you vote the way you wanted to vote. But we are working hard. We're not blowing anybody off, right? All of you have called me at one point or another on a weekend, multiple times, and I've come and responded to you on the weekends. We are working constantly, all of us. All of us are. You get to decide whether or not you want, you think it's reasonable to pay us the money that we feel or that the mayor feels that we deserve. That's up to you to decide. And I'm the first one to tell you, I have department head meetings, I have department meetings in my department every week. I am very proactive with my people in my department, and I know how hard they work. But let's stand corrected here. A lot of people are shocked by the amount of money that I just, that I was paid this year. I'm not the same as one of the people in my department. They get to go home every day. They get called in for overtime and they get paid for overtime. This past weekend, I was called five to six times by the police department to respond to things. And when I called one of my people in, one was not available, two couldn't get a babysitter, a third one was at an activity with his family. So, calculate us, eliminate us, who do you think came in? And guess what? That could be grieved by the union, the fact that I came in and did that job. But what's the alternative when a pit bull is jumping over a fence and going after somebody? Now, you made it very clear, Councilor Chair, at the beginning of this meeting, that things need to be fair, that there needs to be no insults. There is an agenda here. Everyone here knows it. In fact, whether it's pro for the agenda...
At this point, you're not to be making any personal or slanderous remarks...
I'm not making them to you.
While addressing the council.
I'm saying there's an agenda here.
While addressing the council.
Madam Chair, someone just got up and screamed at the mayor and you didn't stop them.
This, well, on here, it says legislative policies and procedures. It doesn't state the mayor, it says council. This is a city council meeting.
This is the original question I had. Can you please just clarify? Since I'm one of the people that just lost $20,000, if my salary, without any notice, can you please tell me?
Show some respect.
I am respecting you.
I'll let you talk.
Pam, trust me, there's other stories going around that I don't talk about.
I don't either.
Well, I don't know about that. But anyways, for clarification purposes, what is this study session going to accomplish? What's going to be your agenda at this study session?
I think we're going to go back and re-trust the amount that was given and maybe decide on a different amount.
Okay.
That's what the intention is.
I just need to know that for clarification. The second question is, when does this go into effect? When does my pay get dropped to $20,000?
I intend to veto it, so it's...
Well, we've got a strong five vote, though, so we can do a super veto.
All right. So, Angela, you're welcome to come and talk to me. If I'm not meeting your standards, my goal is to make sure that we do that. If you have a problem, please come to me and we'll talk about it. But there are a lot of other people that I have to make sure that they're being addressed to. I can't just single out one person, I have to make sure that we're going across the board fairly. When someone calls me and says, "Hey, can you look into this?", keep in mind that five people either sent me an email, called on the phone, I said to them it'll be scheduled this week, and they're patiently waiting for it. When someone else comes up and yells, then all of a sudden, we all have to respond to that. I can't work that way. It's physically, but that's chaos. You can't, there's a structure to the way we do this.
Okay, at this time, you want to just meet with her, and then you guys can compare addresses and see what...
She knows where my office is, she comes in quite, we've talked plenty of times in my office, so she can come see me in my office. I've been here since 7:00 this morning, I'm ready to go home.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Please go.
Couple of things were brought up and were said that makes it sound like this is an attack, or wait a second, this came up at the last second, and I've been doing the best I can do. And I understand that. I worked for the city of Taylor. I worked for the city of Taylor. I retired from the city of Taylor as a police officer. I understand things come up and I understand priorities happen and I understand all those things. What I've been asking about and what I've been repeatedly coming back to the council about have been a problem with the house for 14 years. A problem that I've been calling on repeatedly, been sending repeated emails. I brought in a stack of emails that have been unanswered. I think, I believe Mr. Muscat got very upset because phone calls weren't answered within 24 or 40 hours and he brought that up. Thank you. I still get, where I don't get phone calls returned. And that's what got me is the fact that my phone calls weren't answered. My emails weren't answered repeatedly. Had stacks of emails that I didn't bring them in this time. It's been going on for 14 years. He's telling me, oh, he's got this problem. I'm lying, you're in line. I've been in line, I was told that the house was just purchased by the city last year. It was purchased two years ago. Now he's giving me more excuses why the house isn't torn down last month like it was promised to me to be done in a personal meeting. I know it was said. You know why I know it was said? Because I have a recording of it. I recorded our conversation.
Not disputing it.
It's ridiculous. I can't get a straight answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
I just wanted, I just wanted to say a couple of things as I get here. I've heard everybody who came up here and talked say that they've called or emailed somebody and not gotten an answer. Can you tell us who we should reach out to? I would just like someone to say this is the person to reach out to.
It'd be the administration.
I thought we had a good relationship that you could call me and I will call you back the same day.
We do have a good relationship. In all due respect, you came up to me today before the meeting and said, is there something I can help you with? Yeah, answer my email. That was an easy thing to do. And honestly, to be honest with you, Mayor, we did have a good relationship. We had a relationship that was really good from April of 2017 until about November of 2017. After that, I have been hard pressed to get anyone to respond to me. I've gone through the chain of command. I've tried different people. I don't always go straight to you. I hope the parents in D-7 don't go to me first. There's a chain of command. And I do the same thing. But when I get to you, it's because the people under you haven't gotten to me. I just am asking, maybe I should CC the chair on my emails. I don't know.
CC me and I'll follow up with them too to make sure that they open their email and read it. Because I open mine.
Fair enough. The other thing that I want to say just, and I really appreciate Councilman Wensel suggesting paying back, but this is something that I've just observed tonight and this is not to be disrespectful. I sit through board meetings every other week too and it's the same story. I would hate for this council to spend any time or administration spending any time arguing about whether or not you're going to pay D-7 back for that roof instead of getting the work done that needs to be done right now. So I would ask respectfully that you don't fight about whether or not you're going to pay us back for the roof, but you make sure that that work gets done that needs to make it safe right now. The roof is done. The roof is safe. The floors are not safe. The ceilings are not safe. Okay, so that stuff needs to be done. I'm just going to respectfully ask that you don't spin your wheels on whether or not you're going to pay the roof. And I heard the mayor tell Mr. Gribble to get a list to me within a week. And I just would say to the council, I would not like to get a babysitter every other Tuesday to come to these meetings, but if there's not action taken on the list and the timeline that's given, I will be back to let the council know.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
To follow up with you, and this is bothering me and I'm sitting here thinking about it and I'm getting angrier as I go along. And I've been known to blow my stack on more than one occasion. But you put money into this school. Mr. Mayor, you held a private invitation-only party for two people. That money came out of the recreation department.
That's right.
That money should have went there instead of having a party. That money came from somewhere. And don't tell me you don't know anything about the party. You had an invitation-only private party which is against our charter. That money could have went to them to fix that building. I'm sorry to say it, but I said it. And that's the truth, the whole truth. And there's nothing you can do to deny that. Nothing. And if you try to deny it, you're going to make yourself look bad.
I don't think it will.
No, you don't, you won't because you can't. And this is ridiculous that we're fighting over this stuff. Utterly ridiculous. We have to take responsibility for our own actions.
Councilman, councilman.
Has not ever a council member was even invited to that event.
Correct. Not even, yeah. Certain council people weren't even invited to that.
That's illegal, isn't it?
They didn't like the person.
That is correct.
I mean, isn't that illegal, though? You can't use our taxpayers' money for private things because that's what I learned at MML.
It was an honor to...
It was a private invitation party. It was a private invitation-only party.
Can I have the floor, please?
Councilman, councilman.
Let me talk in a common sense.
Councilman, councilman.
Bully? Yes. And what are you when you point fingers at people? What are you?
Hey, 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 hey.
Don't point it at me. I'll tell you that.
All right, all right, all right. Let's let the mayor talk.
Throw them out, yeah. You're real quick on throw them out.
Okay, let's let the mayor talk. Mr. Mayor?
There was an honor event for Councilwoman March Horvath and Councilman Joe Kaczynski. And in the same way that we have had events for seniors and it was done through the recreation department.
But they weren't private invitation-only parties.
I did not handle the invitation...
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
Oh, come on, Mr. Mayor. You are probably the smartest person in this room, without a doubt in my mind.
Okay, okay.
You're the most intelligent person in this room.
Ray.
And you're going to tell them you don't know what's going on in the city?
Okay, let's move to adjourn.
Second.
He's correct on that.
Go ahead.
But wait, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I'm just wondering, Mr. Mayor, just as an option, maybe, you know, with some of these resident concerns, maybe you have some sort of a liaison between the residents and administration that can maybe lead people to the right direction if there's a problem. So in other words, if a resident comes in and they don't feel, for whatever reason, their situation is being handled, or like the District 7 superintendent not getting callbacks, whatever it happens to be, either a volunteer possibly that works with the city or maybe a current administrator or a current person that's currently with the city to be a liaison, and it doesn't have to be a full-time, all-day job, even if it was just three, four hours, or maybe a volunteer to connect people to the right places or follow up on things to make sure people's questions get answered. Because honestly, I could see the frustration. I'd be frustrated, too.
I would agree, but I am spending more and more of my day trying to keep the city administration together and having people working.
But that's...
I have had so many people who are ready to leave and quite frankly, it's because this council is so disrespectful to the department heads.
The department heads that don't even show up here to answer questions because they don't want to answer the tough question that you yourself don't want to answer.
Who's pointing now?
Okay, you yourself. You yourself don't answer the question.
Okay, 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 okay. At this point, we have a resident that would like to speak. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Hassan Bezi. I live on Sheehan Highway. Sheehan Highway, due to the high traffic that's going on. Just small comment. Actually, I have two comments here. Maybe suggestion, should come up with a general fund, general fund from the citizen, whoever is willing to participate, donate, help, especially when it comes to the senior citizen. This is a very big concern to us here. I mean, we live in the city and maybe that fund could be used for any time that they need to fix a roof or do something with that. The second thing, I have three boys and a girl and my kids grown up, you know, they were thinking about moving out of the city, you know, go live somewhere else. After tonight's meeting, I say it, I say it very loud, that I'm going to convince my kids to live in the city of Dearborn Heights where they were born and I've been living here for over 20 years in this community, just to correct things and be part of how to make sure this administration do the right thing for its citizen. This is enough. I mean, we can have a misunderstanding, we can have an argument, but what's going on here tonight, that's not right. And as you elected officials here, you should revisit most of these issues in a better way for the betterment of the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Got one more.
John Riley, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. I want to roll back the clock, back to December when our city comptroller turned his resignation. I think gave it maybe a month notice at most. And Plant Moran made a suggestion to hire a city comptroller who they were, was an experienced comptroller. And she came to work here starting in January and didn't get any time with the previous comptroller. She's been working at that job up until, hopefully not just till today, but continues working at that job. I'm not familiar with the pays of all the other areas, but I'm familiar with the pays for financial people that work in municipal government, controllers and, you know, treasurers and all of that because that's, you know, when I go to meetings, we talk about these things. We don't talk about, you know, human resource departments, although we have a very good human resource director. But to slash her pay and have her walk out of the meeting and possibly quit was not a good way of handling her pay. You know, she's been working diligently. We do have the auditors here. So basically, she's been in training now, you know, for nine months and we could have possibly, we could possibly lose her and I hope not. So I hope that that study session happens quickly and that somebody reaches out an olive branch and making sure that we don't lose some people until this gets settled. Because I think the proper way of handling it would be to have a study session and then come and make, rather than slashing everybody and then bringing them back up. If we lost the comptroller, we would be in a hurtful position right now. So with that, thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Second.
Supported by Councilman Coniston.
Here's my...